Thanks for joining us for City Council Comments. I'm Steve Erickson along with Councilmember Jenny Geisler. Today, we're talking about both the February 2nd and the February 16th City Council meetings. Thanks for coming in today.
Thank you. It's great to be here.
Yeah, we survived the deep freeze here and we're going to be rewarded hopefully next week with a warm-up, right?
I'm hoping.
It's been not fun.
Yes.
But we just came out of Snowflake Days. That was the annual Coon Rapids Celebration that started the end of January. They had a wrap-up ceremony on Valentine's Day where they awarded the prizes for the snowsculpture contest, the medallion hunt. Always fun to see the creations that people come up with.
Yeah, I saw the photos. I was unable to get out to see them all, but very, very creative people in town and happy that they are participating and joining in the fun.
Yeah, and we know there's even more creative people in town. So when they bring back the contest next year, they're hoping to continue to build this. There were a lot more kind of family activities this year, more socially-distanced things due to the pandemic. But they plan to bring it back, hopefully bigger and better next year, and hopefully we can do a little bit more next year.
Yep, and hopefully it will be a little warmer next year.
Yeah, that is true. And this year, they had the first, the first community parade. I did not recall this. Apparently, we had a parade either in the late 90s or early 2000s for a couple of years where it wound down a road toward the dam. I don't recall that, but this is the first time they kind of went, they had a northern route through the city and they were planning to do a southern route, but that got canceled the second night due to the cold. But that was fun. People could wave to the fire trucks, police cars. There was a snowplow. And then they also collected food for the ACBC Food Show. So pretty cool there. All right, well, let's get into things here and talk about our February 16th City Council meeting. One of the first items we want to talk about there is council adopting a resolution accepting the 2021 SCORE recycling grant funds from Anoka County.
Yeah, and I wanted to bring this up. You know, Colleen Sinclair on our staff does a great job running the recycling center. And the SCORE grants really are what allows us to have this great recycling program that we have within the city. And so this is our annual where we get that grant, which allows us to keep it open. And then I would just encourage everybody to know about the recycling center and use it. You know, it's got a lot of great things that you can, you know, bring in to recycle that we don't want to put everything into the garbage, into the landfills if we can help it.
Yeah, so great. It's always a busy place out there. They've had to change their hours just a bit due to the pandemic, but they've slowly been adding hours and ramping up. Also, they secured bonding money from the state legislature last year for an expansion to the recycling center.
Yes, and so we're excited about all of the opportunities and things growing at the recycling center.
Yeah, I know they're in the planning stages now. I haven't gotten updated recently, but I think this stuff was supposed to get underway this year.
That's my understanding, that we should be able to see some improvements this year.
Yeah, all right. Look forward to that. Council held two public hearings, actually probably more than that, two we want to talk about, are related to street reconstruction for this year. We always do a certain miles of street every year to reconstruct. And it seems like with this year, we're getting more back to the normal amount. We're not as expanded as in the past couple of years.
There's, so the two projects, one is about three miles worth of streets, the other is 3.6 miles. In the past, we've done what are called MSA, Municipal State Aid Streets, what are streets that we get money from the state and we can pull money forward. And this year, we aren't doing any MSA streets. They're just our city streets. And so with these projects, we had the, the public hearing. And that really is to let everybody know, there have been some, people have gotten letters about what's going to happen in the areas. And then we advertised for bids for who would come and what would the projects look like. And so that's where in the end of April, we start to look at the contracts and awarding those. So by mid-May, we would have informational meetings in the neighborhoods. Hopefully, we can do those in the neighborhood parks like we've done in the past. COVID has made it a little more difficult, but we're hoping that we can get back to that this year. But encourage anybody who is in one of the areas. You know, when we do the street reconstruction, our engineering staff does a fabulous job kind of going out there and rating all of the different roads. Are they deficient? Are they poor? And make sure that we have good projects to upgrade the streets. And the, the plan is that the roads would last, they're built for at least 20, but they've been lasting about 30 years. We've been improving what we do. They're putting three inches of asphalt down now instead of two, which gives us a more solid road. We're looking at, you know, sod versus seeding for, you know, grass repair. Because when we do these projects, it's more than just the street. It's curb, it's gutter, it's fire hydrants, it's water main replacements. There's a whole lot of work that happens. And so when it's working and going on, you may get little pink tags on your door. Watch for those because they'll have to potentially turn off your water for a little bit. Or a notice that says, hey, we're going to be right in front of your driveway for a few hours. You know, that would restrict your movements. So there's videos on the city website about, you know, what you should know and what the process is. So if you want to know, lots of great information out there. You can sign up for notify me, which would get you emails or text messages, I think, at the end of the week of where the progress is, what's happening. And so the street reconstructions are really big deals for our city and help us maintain our infrastructure.
Yeah, and it seems like from the beginning, it's a process. So we start at the beginning of the year, staff starts before that even. And then you get to the construction at the end of August and then kind of starting over to plan for next year.
Yep, yep. And, and so it's, it's, at the beginning of the year is our infrastructure week, right? Where we're looking at, and our staff does a fabulous job, but making sure that we don't let things get to where they're not repairable or that they, you know, we have all different kinds of issues with the water mains and whatnot. It's great to make sure that we are maintaining that infrastructure to keep it good for the next 30 years versus letting it totally deteriorate and then having bigger problems.
And there's, there's actually a system that they kind of rate the roads and that's how they decide what's going to happen each year.
And so there's, you know, different kinds of cracking, you know, whether it's a longitudinal crack or if it's, you know, a spider crack or an alligator crack or a pothole. You know, we learned all of the different terms the other night. But the, they, it's a real scientific. They take borings of the street to make sure what is the condition. Because we don't want to spend money where we don't need to spend money. And because it's expensive, but we want to make sure that we have great streets in our city. And that the water mains are there and that you have the good fire hydrants when you need them.
Yep, and I don't remember the exact amount. I know it was probably at least seven or eight million or maybe even more than that between the two projects.
One was, I think, 5.7 and the other one was just around 7 million.
Maybe. So it is, I mean, when you talk about expensive, 12 million just to do the six, some miles of streets. Again, there's other stuff with that, utilities, other, other parts of the process. The bulk of it is paid through the general fund, correct?
Yes.
And then each property is assessed a certain amount.
Yeah, we assess a small portion of the projects and only the street pieces. So anything having to do with fixing the water mains, any of those kinds of, those aren't part of the assessments. Those come from what we call the utility funds. And so right now, a single-family home would get assessed $2,154 if their street is getting, is part of this new street construction this year. You have options with that where they can pay it in full with no interest. There's a payment period up through like November with a small amount of interest. Or you can say, I just want to roll it onto my property taxes and then I pay it over 10 years. And, and there's a small amount of interest that comes with that. But, and that I think is what most everybody does. But you have different options and those will all be spelled out as the assessments come closer.
All right. Again, we'll have more on this coming up when they award bids and other stuff. This is just one step in the process. But if you want more information on the process of street reconstruction in Coon Rapids, go to the city's website, coonrapidsmn.gov. You can find those videos you alluded to, more information about the process, and also a full list of the streets. That could take the rest of the show if we read them all off.
It is a very long list.
You can check out the council agenda if you want to check out all the roads. All right, moving forward, council considered a resolution approving plans and specifications and ordering the ad for bids. This is for the annual street maintenance program. We're kind of on this topic.
Yep, so again, you know, infrastructure week. We have created a joint power agreement. So our city is the leader of it, which I commended our public works director, Mr. Hemmer, that we lead that group and go out and say, let's, as a collective group, put the bids out to say, we need help. You know, the street maintenance and that's for like fog sealing, crack sealing, sweeping, those kinds of things. And that when we do the bid together, we get better pricing because it's a volume, right? And so we just approved the ability to go out and solicit those bids. And then that bid will come back and then all of the member cities have the opportunity to say, yep, I want to sign up. Or that they would pass on and go out and they're on.
All right, on to more infrastructure. Council considered a resolution accepting plans and specifications. This is for the East Reservoir Rehabilitation and authorizing the solicitation of bids. This is that big tank that sits over near Northdale Middle School.
Exactly. And, and so if you didn't know what that was, that is a big reservoir. It holds five and a half million gallons of water. And it's the smaller of the reservoirs that we have. Learned that the other night. But it's again, making sure that our infrastructure is sound and it's safe. You know, we want to have good, safe drinking water. We need to be able to provide that to the city and making sure that our facilities that support that are well taken care of. So this is, you know, a regularly scheduled maintenance.
All right. Council considered a resolution amending the revolving construction fund.
Yep, and again, with our infrastructure, we're looking at building a newer water tower. And that's been in the plans and we've been looking for a site. So I see that coming relatively soon. And with that, there's the water tower that's near the Foley and Northdale intersection. And that water tower will be obsolete. But with that, there's a lot of equipment that is placed on that water tower. Things like cell
Like antennas and all that good stuff.
Yeah, all those fun things. And so with that, this money is to kind of do that study to say, what needs to stay there? Would people still be wanting to have those leases? Because that's good revenue sources for the city. And, you know, everybody wants great cell coverage. And so we want to make sure that those things are there. And so it's planning ahead to say, what can we do to make sure that we don't disrupt any of those services? That those are still valuable to our community. We still have the ability to gain revenue from those leases as we move off of that water tower.
Okay, so is there still, that water tower is going to come down?
My understanding is that it's eventually going to come down.
Is this where the water tower in the southern, I know there's talk about putting one in the southern part of the city. Would that replace that?
It would.
Okay, couldn't that would be a big, a lot, lot larger capacity? Okay, but no, it's still no firm deal on.
Right, and we don't have the plans to build the new water tower yet. So those, you know, that's been stuff that's been in the, the planning stages for, for a while. So I would expect we would see something in the next, maybe this year to start to go out. It was always finding what was the right piece of land for where would that go. And with the reconfiguration of the Foley overpass, that gave some better options for us to put a water tower down in that area.
Okay, that'll be down toward the industrial park?
Yes.
Area in the southern part of the city?
My, my understanding as of today.
Yeah, stay tuned. That stuff can always change.
It can always change.
All right. Well, that's all we had on our February 16th council meeting that we wanted to talk about here today. Moving back to our first meeting of the month, which happened to be all on Zoom. Everybody joined us, kind of do one of those meetings every once in a while. We had an agenda there we want to talk about. We had two items that were actually on our consent agenda that were moved off to discuss on the regular agenda. The first one we want to talk about is council considering a contract between the state of Minnesota and the city for the ICWC program. This item was eventually tabled.
Right, yeah. So this is the Institution Community Work Crew. Councilmember Ray Rower, you know, newer to the, the council, had some questions and really wanted to understand the program before just, you know, putting it through. And so we had some discussion and then we did table it. We're going to look to have the person from the ICWC come and give the group a little bit more information. But this is basically people who are in the jails that can be out on a work release and they will do things like our trash pickup along the boulevard and keeping the roads clean. And there's a lot of maintenance kinds of things that they will do. Typically, it's a win-win in that they get paid, they get, you know, out in the environment, in the fresh air. And we have a lower-cost work crew for the work that has to happen. And so we'll be having a work session to talk a little bit more about what the details are to make sure that everybody on the council is comfortable.
All right, and again, these aren't, these aren't high-risk offenders that are out in the program.
Right, right.
Okay, so more to come on that. There was actually talk of adding a second crew. It sounds like that. So this has been going well, it seems.
We've been using this crew from, for several years and it's always been very successful in our community.
All right, so more to come on that. The other item that was on the consent agenda moved to the, the consideration in our new business was a memorandum of understanding with Anoka Annapin School District for Police Department Support. This contract was actually approved unanimously.
Right, yeah. And, and really that was, you know, where Chief Wise could provide all of the other information that was requested by, by council. And this is where we have the school liaison. We have the police resource officer, the, the people that do DARE. The liaisons, we've been doing that since 1974, DARE since 1989. And, you know, the resource officers in the high schools, they're, they're not in uniform. They're in general clothes and it's there in supportive of the school. And it's the school asking us to provide this service. And, you know, the feedback that we've gotten from the schools and the community and the kids is that they're very valuable. And so part of it was just to not let it slide through with consent, but to actually highlight it and make sure that everybody understood what a great program this is.
All right, and it seems like it's been a good partnership that both entities want to continue.
Yes, yes.
All right. Council considered adoption or did adopt ordinance, adoption of ordinance, 2242, an ordinance revising city code 12-201 and 12-202. This is related to our building code?
Right, so the state of Minnesota has the building code. And this piece is the electrical code. And every so often, people get together and they're looking at, well, what are the existing rules? What are, how can we make them better? Are there things that are obsolete? Are there things that we need to add? And we've, you know, Mr. Brady, our chief inspector, has been part of some of those conversations that are happening at the state. And we have a requirement that says, our city building codes have to match the state building codes. We can't have something that is less restrictive than the state. And so the easiest thing for us to do is just to align to the state building codes. And so when the state adopts the new codes, we have to follow suit and make sure that our codes get updated to align to the, the state code.
Okay, so it's really kind of a housekeeping item?
Yeah, it's really a housekeeping item. But, you know, they do a lot of great work to make sure that everybody stays safe. And that there, we try and make sure that the rules that are there are reasonable, that they're the right things to do. And that we have people with a seat at the table having those conversations. So it's not just regulations for regulation, regulation's sake.
Yeah, all right. Council adopted a resolution authorizing 2020, 2021 insurance renewals. It can be kind of boring, but we kind of want to highlight this.
Yeah, insurance, insurance. We love insurance. And it's on our vehicles, all of the kind of things that you would get for your home, for your insurance. But one of the pieces that we as a council felt strongly about and have been promoting for the last few years is a water sewer backup provision. It would reimburse residents up to $10,000 if there is a sewer backup on their property. You know, if it's, there are, there's the main sewer lines that if something happens there, the city has responsibility for. But there's also the lines that go from the main line to your home. And if something happens in that line, people are responsible for that and it can be pricey. And so that's where this coverage, we look to help out with, with the residents in that. But it encourages people to think about that, that they could have their own coverage for the potential of a sewer backup. We hope that those never happen. I think we've, we had two of them last year, which is a pretty small number for a city our size.
Yeah, so 10, again, this is, the city has coverage, encourage you to get your own because this policy only is up to about 10,000 per property.
Yeah.
So it's a, and depending how bad the damage is, we've had instances where people have been 30, 40, $50,000, maybe even more.
Yeah, and I don't, I'm not sure how much the ones were for this past year. But, you know, and it depends on what you have in your basement. If you have an unfinished basement, obviously the impact would be less than somebody who has a fully furnished, finished basement. And so people need to, to take a look at what the risk is for their, their home and what they want to make sure that they have coverage for, because it is a separate kind of coverage.
Yeah, so check your policy. I know mine, I think, used to be included actually in my policy. This renewal, this year back in December, they actually pulled it out and made it a, I don't know, you could take it off or not. So good to check those things. I know I looked at it and I was like, eh, I should maybe increase this because we talk about this topic every year.
Yeah, so, so good thing, you know.
So I did.
You looked and made sure that you're covered.
I decided and everyone should out there as well. All right, that is all we had to talk about on that meeting. You guys had a work session or you actually had two this month. We had a couple of topics we wanted to talk about that were brought up there. And obviously, work sessions are a little more where you kind of get into more of the meat and do a lot of the discussing kind of before you get to the council format to, so we can make those meetings not be five-hour meetings.
And, and there's, there's certain things with the, the work sessions. They're just kind of informative, you know, here's something that we're working on or, you know, to make sure that things are directionally correct. And so one of the things that we talked about was the Riverdale apartment complex that's by the North Star Rail and behind Target, that area, that the Sherman properties. There's the Nova Building and the Libra Building that are there. And Sherman is coming to us and they're getting ready to look at two more buildings there. One would be a market rate, a larger building, like the larger one that is there today. And then another smaller, which would be like the other smaller building. And so mixture where the bigger building would be a market rate. And that would be 227 units. And then the affordable would be an 80-unit building. They're looking at a lot of different amenities, looking, you know, we've encouraged them to do, you know, they're going to go do traffic studies and just to be able to make sure that all of this stuff that they're doing gets done right. So when they come back to us with, okay, here's our plan, this is what we want to do, they've got everything that we're going to have already be asking for. So that was a great conversation, you know, with the hope that we would start to see those open for people in the 2023 timeframe. So still a couple of years away.
All right, and then another topic on the agenda was a park master plan.
Right, you know, as, you know, there is the large, you know, rev, bond that the citizens did the referendum for the parks and we're getting to the end of those park dollars. We still want to look at what is our master plan for all of our parks. And we'll be looking at where are we at? And then what's the next big park that we would look to start to plan? And so this year, we're going to start planning for Al Flynn Park. And that would be the next one that we would tackle. So planning would be this year on that park.
Okay, and you kind of were, basically before the referendum, they were looking at kind of like one larger, larger park improvement each year and then other park improvements?
Yep.
So are we going to kind of get back to that now that the referendum is over?
I think so, yeah. And always intermix in some trails. And where are the updates, you know, because our, our main goal is to make sure that we can do north, south, east, west, kind of covering the city and to be able to connect all of the trails and make sure that people know how to get through the city on the trails.
All right, and then another topic, this was kind of an interesting discussion on the Bunker Hills Dog Park. This is very well-used, correct?
It is very well-used. And I, I had actually been in a lot of communication with Mr. Hemmer on this one over the last few months with some requests. And that, the Bunker Hill Dog Park has some deficiencies, right? So the first thing that we're going to be doing is come warmer weather, hopefully, maybe even March, April, that we would be installing some lighting and that will be key. Didn't help us necessarily for the dark days of winter this year. But when you get off work and it's four o'clock and it's dark, it's hard to go to the really dark dog park. So we'll be rectifying that. And then the other things that we're looking at doing and getting funding for is to add seasonal water. So there's water and that's great for people and the animals, as well as paving that parking lot and putting in a shade structure because it can get awfully hot there. And so looking at building out improvements for the Bunker Hills Dog Park.
All right, and this is actually kind of a shared venture between Andover, Coon Rapids and Anoka County?
Correct, and so all of the improvements would be split three ways from a cost perspective. And so that, you know, it's making sure that Andover signs up and says, yes, they'll pay. And Anoka County says, yes, they'll pay. And we all agree that they need to be done and we'll move forward.
All right, well, exciting for users of that dog park to get some improvements coming this year, hopefully. All right, one other exciting thing that we were told about at the end of our last council meeting was the steel is being delivered for that new traffic light in Riverdale.
It is, yeah.
So that's going to be online before you know it.
Yep, so, and that is the traffic that is on Northdale kind of between where you would get Intermenards or Costco on either side. And so that will change the, the traffic movement in that area. That was part of a traffic study that was done in the whole Riverdale Village area with, you know, where were crashes happening, you know, what was the actual flow. And so this is one of the pieces of that study. So watch for a traffic change coming ahead.
Yeah, it sounds like even by the middle of March, we could see it in operation or maybe even at least by the end of March. And that was also those buildings that they put up there, like that bank. That was a condition of those buildings was to do something with that kind of busy area.
Right, right, right.
So we're seeing progress on those buildings too.
Yep, and, you know, for, for us, the developer, you know, I've, I've seen different things of like, well, why did they let the city let Famous Dave's go away? Well, not really in our control. So as the, the owners of that land, you know, they felt it was a better use for them to put in the small little strip mall and then the larger building. I understand the larger building is going to be a bank.
That's what it sounded like.
In the strip mall, there's some conversation that one of those pieces may be a restaurant and it may be a smaller version of a Famous Dave's is our understanding. But, you know, look forward to them finishing that and finding out what it's going to be.
Yeah, but stay tuned on that as well because there was talk of that. And then it sounded like maybe things had changed due to the pandemic. And with restrictions, and if you're building a smaller place, how does that work?
Right, yeah, or maybe it's just takeout.
I was going to say, takeout seems to work well, so you still think they'd be a hit with that, so.
So, you know, it's the, one of the challenges where, you know, the city doesn't own the property. And when we don't own the property, well, we guide what can go there. You know, it, it's guided or zoned to be commercial. And that doesn't mean that we get to pick which commercial place comes in or whatnot. We can market the city and encourage people to come and show them all the places that they could go. But it becomes a business demand situation. So unless we own the property, we can't control it.
All right, and then we also have some exciting stuff coming up to the Penny's Building. They're, they're changing that retail space.
So the Riverdale shopping area, the management company who owns that changed hands recently. And the new company seems to be a little bit more aggressive at doing some things. And with the Penny's Building, the plans that we've seen is that there would be one larger unit or tenant and then three small ones on the, what would be the west side and I think two other in, in the space. And, you know, rumors are that one of those might be a grocery store. And we would love another grocery store within the city.
Yeah, so stay tuned on that. It has not been confirmed to the city. The city doesn't know.
We do not know. We do not know. We only, you know, read the, the rumors that everybody else has, so, you know.
And Amazon will not confirm either.
Amazon will not.
If it's an Amazon Fresh store, so stay tuned on that. All right, well, we're out of time. Thanks for coming in today.
It was great.
Thank you for watching at home and we'll see you back here after our two meetings in March.